Good morning. Welcome to the South Hampton Town Board Work Session, Thursday, April 28, 2022. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sunday, will we take our attendance, please?
Deputy Supervisor Capone?
Here.
Councilwoman McAmara?
Here.
Councilwoman Martel?
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier?
Here.
Councilman Schivoni?
Present.
Excellent.
We have three items on the agenda for the work session this morning. The first is mine reclamation, Old Country Road, West Hampton, discussion to be led by Janice Shear, Town Planning and Development Administrator for the town, and associated guests.
We do. We have owners of the property.
Would you like me to approach you?
Sure.
Please, come on.
Okay.
Sure.
We have another. There's another chair that we can bring.
Oh, we, well, just Chris and myself, Chris Almskog.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're fine.
Thank you.
What was your last name?
Elmskog.
Elmskog. Okay. So we have Chris Almskog from P.W. Grocer and George Duke.
Yep.
They're representing the property owners that I just handed out that aerial to West Hampton. It used to be known as West Hampton Mining Aggregates, and this is a parcel on, it's several parcels, 74, 76, 78, and 80 North Summit Boulevard in West Hampton. And we're here because these gentlemen have just recently purchased the mine and are asking, well, you know, they want to reclaim it. It's really hard to...
It's really hard to...
To beat that thing, isn't it?
Is it perhaps the volume on the TV?
Yeah.
That's what Charles was saying.
We are getting some interfering feedback, Charles.
Well, we'll try now.
Okay.
Way back, yes.
Councilman Bouvier, can you hear the board?
I can. Thank you.
So, Charles, you want to leave that with me? When he want, if he wants to speak, I can just turn the volume up so we can hear him.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Anyway, good morning to everyone, and thank you for having us. So this conversation is just a sort of preliminary understanding of how we can look at this reclamation of this mine moving forward. In the past, we had PDDs. We don't have that as a zoning tool anymore. We have a comp plan recommendation that, you know, some of, some part of this, any mine should be used for recreational purposes. But really, when you look at this parcel itself, I think there's two steps to this. One is sand mines as a whole, right? What do you do when they've run their useful life? And how can we reclaim them in a way that's sustainable and that meets our renewable energy goals? So that's one component. And the other component is when we look at this particular parcel and it's where it's located, we, you can see it's located on a rail, on the Long Island Railroad, and very close to a substation. These are two very ideal parameters for sustainable, you know, redevelopment, you know, meaning solar, batteries, that kind of use. So we're thinking about, and I would like the board to help, you know, start thinking about what we can do to help them. They need to basically reclaim it, fill in the hole, you know, they are under the purview of New York State DEC. They cannot reclaim the property back to grade or any other place until they know, until DEC knows what they're going to do with it. And they have no path forward because there's no zoning here that allows them to do anything other than, you know, five-acre zone residential. But this is a unique opportunity because here you have a situation where we're looking for places for renewable energy, for solar arrays, where we're not trading green for green. We're not clearing all these woods to put solar. We want somewhere like a sand mine, which is completely, you know, cleared already, and battery storage, using the rail siding for, you know, future uses, you know, being able to have that synergy with the rail siding, allowing for some kind of composting or unique, you know, there's all kinds of, you know, biochar or other types of vegetative waste to energy programs that we may be able to avail ourselves to. So I just, you know, we're just in the preliminary stages of talking about this, but they wanted to come here to meet the board and to discuss the ideas that they had for redevelopment here and also to see, you know, what the board's feeling is on this and kind of be partners together in how we can make this, you know, some kind of sustainable, integrative, technology type of use that's not going to create a lot of traffic or noise. You're in a hole, so you have this possibility that you can build things without anybody ever knowing it's there. So how high do they raise that grade? And what are the kinds of uses that they could put there is really what we're, we're here to discuss.
Janice, what's the size of the parcel?
Forty-seven acres. Seven parcels. It's approximately forty-seven acres. And by the way, just for the record, my name again is George Duke with Brown Duke and Fogel, environmental and land use lawyer who's working with Chris Almskog from P.W. Grocer. And the clients on, I initially got involved with not only the, this discussion, but also to handle the existing status of the site and the discussions with the DEC. So, anyway.
What is the status of your current DEC permit, if, if any?
Yeah. So, so what we're doing right now is it's currently covered by, the former use was the, was the former transmine, West Hampton Mining Aggregate Site. It's no longer being operated as a mine. They had left some piles of soil there. So our client, who's in the business of moving and dealing with clean soil, so it was a suitable site for them. That's probably why others felt it's kind of out of their wheelhouse to handle this site. But to bring the site back to a useful repurposing and restore it, it requires movement of a lot of material because there was some material brought there and left there by the prior owner that was under beneficial use determinations with the DEC. So our client is going to come in, resolve that. So there's two components. One, it's going to do it under a consent order with the, we're currently negotiating in terms of a consent order with the DEC to allow certain operations to occur while a grade adjustment permit, a Part 360 grade adjustment permit is issued. So we're also going to be applying for that as well to allow the grade to, the fill to come in and fill up the hole. So I think at this point, before we continue on with the full grade adjustments, that's why we started the discussions. And I think it's opportune time because it's rare that you have, usually, my clients are in the business of, you know, you have a site that's at grade and you're making it higher. Here, you have a very suitable lenticular, you know, rectangular site that's in a hole that exists. It, there's the opportunity, perhaps if anything goes there and gets built there, to keep it somewhat subdued from a profile perspective, from the surrounding environment, so it's less impactful and minimizes the, any type of visual impacts.
When Janice introduced the topic, she made reference to some of the town's energy objectives. Are the owners amenable to those kinds of project considerations?
Absolutely. Yeah, that was, so always one of the, the convenience, so you have the factor of the rail line, right? The New York rail line underneath. Then you have the, it's only about a quarter mile east of the existing South Hampton, I'm sorry, West Hampton Transfer Station. So just to give you a geographical reference point.
How far did you say?
It's less than a quarter mile, I think.
Yeah, it's just east.
It's literally just east of the transfer station.
Right, just beyond that old file map that you see on your area.
Old Country Road. It's probably near that, right on the other side of that yellow line.
Yep.
So it's, you know, it's nicely suited if you look at the surrounding environment. So, yes, the original vision of our clients, my clients who are here today, was to repurpose it and restore it. What do you do with the site? It's perfectly suited, you know, like Jonathan referenced, you know, you have the power location. So one of the initial things, conversations was for solar or battery energy storage systems. So battery storage is definitely...
Can I throw a question out there?
Yeah, this is...
Totally off, just because of where it is and what it is. Did anybody ever think about an ATV park?
Yes, that was in the comp plan recommendations.
Just because...
It did say the site could appropriately be reused for different types of rec uses, including ATV parks, campgrounds, et cetera. Now, that's entirely not, you know, there's forty-seven acres, so I don't know that you would want to use the whole site for that.
Right.
I don't know how they feel.
No, I know we do have an issue in the town with ATVs on trails and in places they shouldn't be, and there really is nowhere left to ride. So just being that it's down, the noise will be contained, and knowing the area of where this is, it would just be a...
Well, I think that's what the, part of this initial conversation is, to present it.
To see, hear, some feedback.
And, yeah, and any uses would be consistent with the comp plan and any other vision you have, consistent with, you know, kind of the existing use. Because remember, we have to do, have to remove material that's there. There's some deleterious material. Interesting thing, Chris, just for context, I just, it's not quite really that contaminated. It's regulated, and it has to be done under the jurisdiction, the soils that exist have to be done under jurisdiction of DEC. However, the reality is, I think, the contamination's not significant.
So there are stockpiles on the site within, within the hole that were brought in about a decade ago. Some of that material, material was tested by the clients. They went in, they kind of evaluated, shared that information with the DEC. Based on the findings, approximately about 20,000 yards of material probably is going to be leaving the site for disposal somewhere else. The rest of the material is suitable to be reused on site. So that's what we have in front of the DEC, what's called a soil and site management plan, talking about how those materials that are on site and how potential future materials that come on site are going to be properly managed to ensure that materials that are being spread or used for backfill are clean and suitable and not contaminated.
Did that research include a chain of custody on, on the fill of material that was warehoused at the, at the site?
DEC had that already as part of their order of consent that was brought against the former owners about a decade ago. So DEC had tracked down where a lot of the material had come from. It was a lot of, some different dredging projects throughout the island.
And that's going to be most of the material that presumably would be taken off the site and brought somewhere else?
What was classified and sampled, you know, they did a very thorough kind of sampling, sampling profile of the piles that were there. And based on that, DEC kind of carved out certain portions that needed to, to basically be dealt with and brought offsite.
There seems to, there's also vegetative waste on, it looks like, from a photograph. I haven't been on the property. I haven't walked it. Is there vegetative waste? Is it active?
I don't think so. There's not, no, no. I mean, there are a few, there's some concrete piles, but most of it's soil piles. There's no significant vegetative organic piles.
Okay.
Most part of the land is already cleared. There's very minimal vegetative waste on it. A lot of those piles, the soil piles, have been there for a while, so they are, they've, they've grown vegetation on them, which, you know, does stop erosion, but it's not as if, it's not as if it's, let's say piles of mulch or tree stumps or things like that. There are, there are no significant piles like that on the site.
So can you guys...
Thank you.
For any of the options that might be available, I think I heard you indicate that there's going to have to be some kind of zoning modification that would take place here.
There is no, like, path, and not just for them, but for any sand mine that, you know, so I would want to create a code that someone could avail themselves for several different types of uses, depending on where they are and what, what's going on there. You know, they've thrown out many ideas, and the code could allow like a table of uses that you could select from, all being special exception that would require some, you know, review.
John had a question.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I toured the site, and as you know, under our, our goals energy-wise, we're looking for, as Jen's pointed out, we're looking for sites where we don't have to tear down trees or cut up, up anything, basically unuseful land to be able to put in solar arrays, battery sites as well. But in addition to that, just keep in mind, I know Councilman Schivoni just mentioned vegetative waste. One of the things that looks really interesting, at least from my perspective, we have a problem with vegetative waste, closing a, or paving landfill coming up in the next couple of years. And it's spoken a little bit about biochar as a, so pyrolysis. So it's a, it's a means of creating a product out of vegetative waste, and it's, it's quite attractive. And I think this might be something that might also fit into this, this concept as we try to explore our zoning in order to, you know, help make this happen. There's very little vegetative waste there. There is some mostly aggregated, it looks like, that's piled there. And I understand the issues with C, but just from the perspective, you know, from 30,000 feet, this sort of fits in very well with all the goals of, we're trying to establish in the town proximity to, interconnected with the grid, proximity to a rail spur, that type of thing. So that's just criteria, just like, just you all keep in mind, you know, as we look at this.
Thank you, John. Just to follow up a little bit more, this would seem to me like an opportunity for discussions that we've had about this, what did you call it, like an enterprise zone, where you would have a, a range of flexibility and a table of use that would put otherwise unproductive properties into more productive use. And that zoning would cover, could cover the range of suggestions we've had so far.
Right.
With the biocharge or the ATV facility.
Yes. And, you know, they've proposed a few others, you know, some warehouse storage, greenhouses, you know, distribution type of, not, I say that when I don't mean like Amazon. I mean, you know, because you're using the rail siding, so you're, you know, dealing with distribution there.
Is that an active siding? Is it still being used?
It's not active, no.
They would have to activate it and build the siding.
Right.
Yeah, that would have to be.
It's literally, it butts the southern portion of the property. It runs right along the southern portion. So it's, you know, kind of lends itself to that, but it hasn't been used as yet.
So we would try to, you know, some kind of like industrial reclamation, you know, environmental restoration remediation type of zone. So if you have an industrial piece of land that's being reclaimed, you would go under that code, you know, and then you'd have your menu of uses that you would permit and under what circumstances.
I mean, there's multiple uses that could happen on this.
Yeah, you can, you know, some of these sites are, this site is almost 50 acres. Many of these sites from the comp plan, we had a few, and they were 50, 30, 115, you know, so they're, they're quite large. So you could have a number of uses, as long as they are synergistic and they don't cause any, you know, issues to the surrounding.
And the surrounding, the majority of the surrounding parcels are CR-200?
In this case, yes. And this is the core of the Pine Barrens, too. So we will, you know, need to talk to Pine Barrens Commission. Had some preliminary conversations with them, but they're going to have to weigh in on what's allowed here.
This is the core, is that...
Core preservation area, yeah.
This is in the core. But, you know, this was, you know, back in, this was no man's land where you could, you know, do mining.
Right.
Now, as we fill in, but this, this particular mine is auspicious in the sense that there's not a lot going on right around it. And you're in a hole. So where do they bring that grade up is what they're very interested in now. But when they came to see me, and John as well, we said, we don't really have a path. We don't really have a way forward until you develop one. So that's why we're here, to just have that preliminary conversation, get the ideas together, and then try to, you know, put something together that makes sense.
That's right. In Section 160, we do have a land, mining and land reclamation portion of our code, but it only deals with the testing.
Right.
That we, we put in a year and a half ago.
That's for active mines, yeah.
Right, for active mines.
So we're talking about now a mine that's no longer active. They want to convert it into a use that works and meets our objectives. And what are those objectives? First and foremost, I would say those are sustainability objectives. Now, they've kind of taken what they needed out of the earth, and now it's kind of time to give back, right?
What's happening there?
Yeah. So, and not they, these are new owners.
Yeah, they didn't cause any of the issues. They're actually cleaning.
So they're cleaning it up and under a reclamation plan. And what does that look like, is what we're really out to figure out.
Speaking for myself, I'd sort of commend the new owners of the property for approaching the town with what could be a beneficial opportunity for both. But you raised the issues before that. We always have to be, the board, the town board has to be mindful of impacts and perceptions from the surrounding community members that are there. And you alluded to the low-profile aspect, the minimal amount of in-and-out traffic, are considerations that I think would be important to the board and certainly important to the community.
How do you access the site?
Right off Old Country Road, you'll see on the southern, southwestern corner.
Okay.
Right? It's, the address is actually 76 North Summit Boulevard.
All right, I see it.
I believe on the south, lower left-hand corner.
There's a...
I'm sorry, of where the red, of the red outline. So you come up right where that rectangle.
Yeah, right there.
Yes, right above where your finger is.
Sorry.
Is there a railroad crossing, like, gates? Is there a gate crossing?
No. The crossing is a little bit earlier. When you drive into the property, it's, you're actually crossing, you know, a few hundred feet before you get to the property.
Well, it certainly is tucked away.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it seems, and it is an auspicious time because they're removing what is considered contaminated must-be-go, but then before they start filling, it's like the timing is kind of suitable to, like, before it gets filled up. There certainly will be some filling, but, you know, if you can match it with a proposed use, that would be permitted. And this isn't going to happen overnight, obviously. This is a long, it takes a lot of effort to do this.
John has a question.
We appreciate you coming.
Yeah, so the timing works because knowing how long it may take.
Councilman Bouvier?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, there's a railroad crossing there where you turn the north summit to get in there.
Yeah.
And it's on the north side. It tracks its residences and, you know, early conversations with local residents and favor that. I mean, it kind of fits the bill in a lot of the ways that we have, very willing owners that are willing to work with us to do, to meet some of the goals that we're trying to implement in the town. So, and the fact that it's right adjacent to the West Hampton Transfer Station is also part of that criteria. So it kind leads a lot of the bills, but I'd kind of like to use that as a means to define what our use criteria would be, you know, to protect it, protect the community as well, you know, so that they understand what's actually going to go on there. It's not heavy loading. It's, you know, trying to meet the town goals. But the location in that particular area seems idyllic for this kind of thing. So I just, I just wanted to make that point that as we go forward and try to look at what we're going to establish as, as criteria, this sort of fits that bill and should kind of, almost a guide, in my view, for, you know, what we would require for this type of thing.
I think it's clear that there's a willingness to consider a number of different options on the part of the town board. I think you came here with an understanding of what the board's cautions might be, if that's not too strong a word. Again, personally, I think the energy objectives that the town has and the, the unavailability of renewable energies on Long Island kind of forces local municipalities to creating, in the community, what they're called community distributed generation, local generation of renewable powers, which can benefit the entire community, not just the immediate neighboring residences within the community, would be a higher priority, but not necessarily the highest. There's room on this property for more than one kind of activity, I would think. We've had a couple of the suggestions, but we've spent a lot of time trying to get renewable energy resources within the community. And it's a difficult process because properties of this size would be, if not a disturbed parcel, are really not available to the town to consider that option. We purchase a lot of properties through the Community Preservation Fund. That eliminates the possibility of this kind of creative redevelopment. But I think that avenue and perhaps some others is well worth pursuing. And I, for one, welcome a partnership with private ownership and the town to work together. It's kind of a unique model in this arena. But I think the opportunities are growing for support. I know the DEC, for one, is actively supporting purposeful reuse of disturbed landfills or, or mines. That, we have a town-owned one that we're going through a similar process with the DEC. And they encourage, if, if it meets their criteria, to put the property back into useful production of some kind that's commensurate with the values of the community, of course, so.
Is there an existing reclamation plan with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation?
There is, but it's just normal to regulations. You know, it's from the, probably, I think from the 80s.
Okay.
So it's from the old, the prior, prior owner, so two iterations back.
Yeah, there's sloping angles on the side and some vegetation on the sides and the bottom.
Would you then have to submit to Councilman Schivoni's point, a new work plan for the reclamation?
Yeah, that would be subsumed within the consent order. So it would be, and then ultimately, to adjust the grade, we're going to pull out of, we would actually pull out of mining and go right into Part 360 regulations, so solid waste regulations. That would be the governing. I mean, DEC would sell jurisdiction over the site until it's complete, but that's the concept right now.
So Janice, based on what we've discussed right now in terms of the code that needs to be created, do you have a clearer path to what scope that might?
I do. We can go back and, you know, sort of get a conceptual plan now with the applicants, you know, the owners. And, but independent of that, I think, just sort of sketch out some kind of path, some kind of zoning code.
Yeah.
That, that would be suitable and what those uses are, not just for them, but for any mine coming in.
So would that include some LI-40, some light industry type zoning, too?
It could, sure. I mean, we're, we're really lacking in like contractor storage areas and other things along those lines, so you might want to consider that. We could use some more LI-40, we're really low, type of uses allowed.
The entire site is in the core?
Yes.
Yes.
So as far as development, you have, you're making a non-conforming grandfather status as far as being able to develop the site at all? Or how's that work?
We haven't discussed the actual approach.
I'm not sure. They would have to determine whether it's regional significant and jurisdiction is obvious, you know, it's in the core. So we'd have to know how many square feet they're proposing to really understand where it falls in the Pine Barrens. Conceptually, I did speak to them generally about it. They were open to hearing, you know, this idea and how this would go, so.
And this is a little unique.
Keep those conversations over.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, this is truly a unique site, so it's not just an abandoned mine, right? It's a mine that has to be restored and, and certain amount of soil has to be removed, right, before it can be properly abandoned or, you know, reclaimed.
And brought in.
So, right. So this is truly a restoration project, not just, you know, abandoned mine, so.
How much was that, Chris, how much square foot did you say or cubic feet?
Right now, the estimate is about 20,000 cubic yards. We'll probably, somewhere around there, we'll probably be leaving the site.
So I can work on developing the, you know, framework for a code, and then we can keep doing this. Just kind of come back for another work session, see how this is looking, you know, even independent of this one, just generally, and then get, then give it to them to sketch out how this site would look if they took that code and put it on a plan. Yeah. So that, that would be my recommendation, that we do that, you know, in this kind of format, where we'll work together and then get some public community input and see if this could, you know, move forward. Because we do want them to reclaim it, and I don't want them waiting, you know, forever. So I'd like to, you know, move it forward and then give others a path. And in our battery storage code, we actually had, you know, you're not allowed to do battery storage in five acres unless you have, you know, an opportunity type of site like this. So we can take a look at how we're all... So we can take a look at how we're also writing our solar code, so that's consistent as well. To give an extra path for these kinds of uses, it's an incentive then to come forward. And I know we do need sand and mining is a use, but we also know that it causes a lot of consternation in our communities, so.
I'm sure the other mine owners would be very interested in this, you know, as their DEC permits are winding down.
Right.
You know, they may want to choose this path.
Exactly. So coming forward and working together is always the best path.
And without the definitions that were in the now-defunct PDD code, this gives, this kind of partnership gives an opportunity to define some community benefit that might come out of a project like this, which I think is of great interest to the town, obviously.
Right, like a use that, you know, for our youth and people that, you know, would like some, some amount of recreational component.
Well, they're currently doing it on our preserved CDF.
Yeah.
I don't mean to say that tongue-in-cheek, but it's happening.
This would keep them out of undisturbed pine barrens and into a disturbed area of pine.
Right, and we'd like to have a public benefit component to all this.
Yeah.
So, great.
So I think the path that you described is a good one, I think that's the flavor of the conversation from the, from the other board members. Any other questions from board members? John, do you have anything to add?
Just quickly to reiterate what you were saying, Frank, that, you know, this for us, when we look across the town at many of these sites, having this sort of public-private partnership, I think is really critical. You know, frankly, it's beneficial, I believe, to the town because those costs are being borne by, by a private organization that is going to work within the code as we develop it to do all those projects that I think are beneficial to both sides. It just makes a lot of sense, obviously, the devil's in the details, you know, how we evolve this code is really important. But, you know, given the grander, the wider scope of what we're looking at across the town, numerous sites like this, and it just makes sense, this is the time to really look at that as a benefit to the town and also to the ratepayers who are, you know, paying orbiting high prices or kilowatt hour. These are things that are driving us to do the North Sea maritime, North Sea transfer station, solar array, in areas like that where it makes sense, guided by, you know, well-written and good code, so. Thank you guys for coming in and presenting, I look forward to a whole bunch more work sessions as we move forward.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, one last thing I just wanted to mention, so we are in active negotiations with DEC. So I really thank the board's time, and Janice in particular, and Jim for allowing this opportunity, because obviously this is open and notorious, and I want to make sure the DEC is aware of these conversations.
Okay, absolutely.
And I'll let them know.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's great.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is a discussion of the open meetings law modifications. As the board members know, for the past many, many months under executive order from the governor, we've been allowed to conduct remote meetings for various committees. And with that executive order expiring, the state took it upon itself, our state legislators took it upon itself to bring some modifications to the open meetings law, recognizing that there was adequate evidence, both documented and anecdotal, that these kinds of open meetings did increase community engagement in these kinds of activities, and that's what, certainly a worthwhile benefit. The open meetings law, I don't want to make it editorial comic, but sort of kicks the can down to the local municipality to create local legislation within the framework of that open meetings law. And there are some conditions which are inviolate, but there is some flexibility. So with the help of Kathleen and Ryan Murphy, our Director of Public Surfy, Surfy, Safety, that's Murphy's Law, make a mistake again, a draft legislation has been prepared, and particularly Kathleen has supplied us with a memorandum outlining some of the conditions of the law and the procedural elements that the law might suggest. And then the board would entertain a public hearings over the change to the code and then vote on those public hearings. So I'm going to turn it over to Kathleen to review this, all the board members have copies of that memorandum?
Thank you, Frank.
Good morning, members of the town board, good morning, John.
He waved. Thanks, John.
So, as Frank pointed out, as you know, and you probably have heard, in light of the pandemic, Governor Hochul on April 9, 2022, as part of the New York State budget, signed Chapter 56 of the laws of Chapter 220, the laws of 2022, which included an amendment to open meetings law or public officers law, which is 103-A. And as Frank indicated, this amendment allows for expanded use of video conferencing by public meetings, of public bodies, to conduct open meetings under particular circumstances, regardless of whether or not there's a state of emergency in place. So I have this memo prepared, and I think we could go through it if that's okay, please feel free to stop. I mean, there's also a couple of attachments that will be relative to our discussion. One is a draft local law, and you'll see that that local law is pretty straightforward because really the substance of the procedures are going to be found in a proposed town board resolution. It's better to put the procedures in a town board resolution so that you can change those procedures as time goes on without having to go back out to public hearing. Councilman Scavoni, do you have?
I have a question, yeah. Has 103A been, has that legislation passed?
Yes, so 103A has been effective since April 9 as part of the governor's budget. So we can get to the.
Put it in there, okay.
Yeah, so in terms of timing, we can get to that, but essentially, as part of that budget process and as part of the law for the next, for 60 days from April 9, so until June 8, you can proceed under the current pandemic emergency order, video conferencing guidelines that we've been using. After June 8, then we have to either, you have to have, you have to decide whether or not you want to implement these new regulations or not allow for video conferencing. If you want the continuity of video conferencing, then it would be a good idea if we can have these public hearings in May and then adopt it at the end of May. Your first meeting is June 14, so maybe there would be a slight lapse if it goes into June. But in terms of timing, on June 8, the current procedures expire, and then you'd have to implement these new procedures. So hopefully, as we go through this, it'll become a little more clear. This meeting today is a good illustration of what could happen if you decide to move forward and adopt these new policies. I have a quorum of the board sitting here, and you have one member participating via video conference. So that's exactly what this new legislation is allowing you to do in the event of an event of an extraordinary circumstance. So I'll go through it, I'm kind of all over the place, so I apologize for that. But this is a good, this meeting is a good illustration of what's to happen. Okay, so generally, the provision allows members of public bodies to participate in meetings via video conference from a location that is not accessible to the public, so long as certain conditions are met, including that a majority of the board meets from a publicly accessible location. Video conferencing was always part of the open meetings law, but the condition was that you had to post and publish where somebody was video conferencing from, and you had to give the public the authority to attend with you at that place. And obviously, you wouldn't want people in your living room when you were attending that meeting and posting and publishing your address. So then during the pandemic, as you know, under the emergency orders, the governor said, okay, we're going to take that provision out for now, and obviously, members can participate via video conferencing from their living room without allowing the public to sit in their living room with them. And so now this next step is a little bit of a hybrid to adjust and allow for public participation in person, but also a couple of members if they have to, to participate from home, so.
Would this include the public? Now, you're going to go through this.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
The public, if the town board chooses to participate, which I think you are interested in participating, if I've.
Or at least preserving the option to participate.
Correct, right.
That's maybe another important way to look at it, is if you don't take any action with this, you lose the video conferencing option.
You can't bring it back.
You know, to use in the way, where you may have a board member remotely. So you would go back to the open meetings law as previously existed.
Right, and in order to take advantage of this, we have to adopt a local law to allow, to allow this to happen. And in that local law, you'll provide authority to all of your public bodies, to all of your boards, to participate in this. And then you'll see at the top of page two, you must adopt a written policy that is consistent with the law, establishing how this is going to work, what is this going to look like? And that's the resolution that we talked about a little bit. What are the conditions? This is the main gist, and it's probably what's getting the most media attention and what you've heard the most about. What are the conditions of being allowed to do this? The law requires that members of a public body should be physically present unless extraordinary circumstances exist. The town board may identify what constitutes extraordinary circumstances in its written policy. The state law has already identified what some of those extraordinary circumstances are, and they've identified that to be disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, or any other significant or unexpected factor or event that precludes physical attendance.
Does it include language not limited to?
Yes, so it does allow this town board the discretion, and that's, we'll get to that in your resolution of procedures, to add to that as you see fit, if you choose to add to that. So a quorum of the board must participate in a location that is accessible to the public in order for the other members of the board to use video conferencing. So if you have a five-member board, such as this board, three members must be at Town Hall, just like you are today, in order to allow another member, such as Councilman Bouvier today, to participate via video conferencing. The participant who is participating, the member who is participating via video conferencing does not count towards your physical quorum. You must have a physical quorum in the physical location where the public can attend. Now, they certainly count, their votes count towards any other procedures during that meeting, resolutions, votes, yes, absolutely. It does not take away any other authority that that member has, other than their presence in terms of meeting your quorum requirements. Five-member board obviously is three, a seven-member board, you do have a few of those, would be four.
Just to underscore one point, because I've had some discussions with Kathleen about this, these, some of the language that Kathleen used in her summary here, one in quotation marks, extraordinary circumstances, and then the list, as Kathleen describes, of those things that are considered extraordinary circumstances, these directly extracted from the legislation. So the state legislation contains the very same language. From, if I may, from my own perspective, it's the intent of the state to preserve the best of both worlds. The opportunity for the community to come here and attend a meeting, and also to participate in a meeting remotely. Likewise, for the board members, the requirement that a certain level of a quorum of the boards be present in the room is intended to preserve the direct interaction between community and elected legislatures, which is at the core of, you know, participatory democracy, if you will. But also then allow for the circumstances where it can happen that someone can't be present, as is in the case with Mr. Bouvier today. And he can fully participate in the meeting as an elected member, but can do that participation from a remote location. So I think that's at the core of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, I think it's quite clear in the legislation passed by the state that they want to do whatever possible to try and encourage the physical presence of any board, but through lessons learned from COVID.
Yeah.
And technologies that have improved in the last couple of years, they want to allow for conditions where one or two people, in the case of a board such as this, where it's a five-person board, one or two people may not be able to be present. And I think the other thing that's just worth noting is, we're having this conversation about just regular board procedures. If you adopted this policy or legislation, it would be something that could be utilized on a regular basis, on a blue-sky, non-emergency day. This does not preclude the state from suspending open meeting laws again in the future, if there were ever to be an emergency condition that required them to do that, where you may be able to go full remote, okay? This would, this is about our normal procedures as a municipality, to allow for this type of condition, to have up to two people not physically present at any time for a meeting.
This local law, we could not go full remote, or our boards could not go.
You could not go full remote because of this law, and because it's, you don't have the ability under state open meetings law to go full remote. You have to have a quorum physically present in a setting.
Starting on June 8, Councilman.
Yes, yes.
Right.
They gave a window of 60 days for any municipality wishing to engage in this, from the date of the budget passing, which this was included in, they gave a window of 60 days for you to decide locally whether you're, whether or not you'd like to preserve a degree of video conferencing option going into the future.
So the extraordinary circumstances would pertain to board members, but not the public?
Correct.
That's correct.
Because the public could always video conferencing.
So they could come to any public hearing or public portion?
Absolutely. And we would always continue to notice that physical location where the board will be meeting.
And is there language in here for the public to give comment during public, public portion via video?
So, so what it says is, basically, a member of the public who wants to video conferencing is allowed to participate in the same manner as any member who would be physically present. So you have to give them the same opportunities at public portion, at a public hearing, if they're, if you called for discussion on a resolution, any opportunity that they would have if they were physically here, you have to give to them via video conference.
And some of the points that Ryan was raising with regard to state of emergency from the state and also a local state of emergency, Kathleen has a subsection to address some of those points a little bit further, so if we can just proceed through the memo, Kathleen, I'd be.
Sure, so the next section is really, again, taken from the new amendments to the state law, this talks about process. And in terms of process, it's really not different from what we've already been doing during the pandemic. In fact, it's arguably a tiny bit more lenient in that it just says that transcription of the meetings is only if somebody requests it. But basically, if you wanted to do video conferencing, the town must maintain a website, obviously, that's not an issue for us. The recording must be posted or linked on the town's website within five business days, that's already happening. It must remain available for five years, that's okay too. Minutes must be available, that is no different than how we currently operate under Public Officers Law 106. If a member of the board does participate via video conference, the public, again, must be allowed to participate via video conference in the same way that they otherwise would. The minutes must note if somebody participated via video conference on the board, who that board member was. The public notice must inform the public that video conferencing is available, how to access that, where the physical location of the board is meeting, where the quorum of the board will be located, yes.
Just a quick question, on the one, if a member of the board participates via video conference, the public must also be allowed to participate? So is that only for meetings where somebody is participating via video conference? If they're not, then we don't have to let the public do it?
You know, that's a good question, I don't interpret it that way. I interpret it that if you're going to allow video conferencing, then it shall be allowed for each and every meeting. And if a board member happens to take advantage of that ability to video conference from wherever they may be, if they're home, if they're ill, then that's an advantage for them. But really, the goal of the law was to allow the public to continue to video conference, and a benefit is afforded to a board member.
Yeah, just the way that was.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
It does raise that question.
Yeah.
But to underscore that point, I think it's in the town's best interest and certainly in the staff that manages the background to accommodate this, that, for the board to come to agreement, this is the way that these meetings are going to be conducted, regardless of that possible distinction, and be consistent throughout. It's easier for the public to know that that consistency is there, and it's certainly easier on our staff that manages the video conferencing to know that it's going to be to know that it's going to be consistent, not only for this board, but for other boards that are available, available, this option is available, too.
Yes. There's value to the public for that predictability, to know that any meeting will be accessible via video conference if you decide to do this. Much like we're doing, we have been doing, you know, the public must be able to see you, hear you. So obviously, a member can't turn their camera off during a meeting. But again, that's pretty much how we've been operating under the pandemic rules.
Does this affect CACs at all?
No.
So CACs are not public bodies. Open meetings law speaks to public bodies. And in their capacity, particularly because they're advisory-only, they are not captured by this.
It's also a technological challenge.
Yes, absolutely, for sure.
We not only have to have a councilman box, hello, councilman, and we're going to have to have a public box for people to raise hands.
Right, yes, that's true.
But that's just the technology. So you can't turn your camera off?
Correct. You have to be, if you are a member of the board, you cannot turn your camera off.
How about your volume? You sneeze.
Might want to adjust it.
Okay.
So.
The last bullet point.
The last one that the town also, this is important, obviously. The town must use video conferencing technology that allows members of the public with disabilities to participate in a manner consistent with the American with Disabilities Act. And this is something that we probably haven't addressed during our pandemic use of video conferencing, but that we'll definitely have to pay far more attention to going forward. And that is finding a platform, a virtual platform, that allows us to accommodate people who may have, be hearing impaired or visually impaired. And so we'll be committed to working with the IT staff at CTV to make sure that we do have, we are utilizing license agreements with virtual platforms that can provide this service to people.
All the other technological aspects that this law, we're confronted with as a result of this law, we've been able to address. Our CTV staff has been able to work out all of the elements of remote conferencing, multiple tiled screens, so that the public can be seen as well and can see and hear the board members. This last one, particularly as it relates to what we commonly call closed captioning, that would allow for visually or a hearing impaired individual to see the text of what is being spoken, is still a challenge. Our IT department is investigating that. There are options available, but they're, they are varying degrees of reliability. The best slash worst example I can give is when you're texting and it finishes the sentence for you and it's not what you intended to say, is what some of these closed captioning tools result in. So we certainly, for the board's benefit, want to be sure that we're providing a technology that has a reasonable reliability, that what they wrote is exactly what you said. We've not yet solved that particular issue to our satisfaction. The town hasn't.
Do I, that has to be on our end? It can't be on the user's end? Because I know a lot of people with disabilities have assisted devices that will work with, say, Zoom. You're saying we would have to make sure?
Yes, we are responsible under the new legislation to make sure that persons with disabilities can participate in a meaningful way. And we have to have the software to do that. And that, that's probably, like Frank said, the biggest difference in how we've been operating under the emergency orders. So, and then the next section kind of speaks a little bit to Councilman Scavoni's comment earlier. The legislation does say that in the event that we do.
John has a question.
John?
Yeah, just a quick question, Kathleen. I've read through this, but I'm not entirely sure. Something that enables us to establish a protocol for communication, particularly for hybrid meetings, like the, not difficulties, but I have the ability to lay my hand so that you can see that I can speak, particularly for people that are joined remotely. I think it might be, I don't know if that's contained in the state law, but that we can establish the process by which we communicate more effectively. Sometimes it's difficult to jump in when you're remote, which I'm experiencing right now. And, you know, and I like to jump in, but I shouldn't. It's a good process that we have here. Maybe we could explore that a little bit as part of establishing some kind of protocol on how these hybrid meetings function.
Absolutely. And that might be something that we can address in the resolution, adopting the video conferencing procedures. And it also might be something that's.
To your, to your point, John, there is a, our CTV staff acts as host. And that term really can be translated into gatekeeper. But to your point, does the board know that Mr. Bouvier wants to ask a question? We don't always have that option clearly defined, but I think it's an important addition that we can consider. I think it's a, there's a solution for that. We just have to articulate it in the procedures.
Yeah, and to be fair, I think that this is still relatively new. And we're going to do our best to try and identify something like that in procedures. But there has to be a certain degree of, you know, lessons learned as we go along the way and fine tuning of things that's going to occur. So some of that might be just handled administratively, like as you move along with things, in line with the identified procedures that may have to remain just slightly open on a couple of topics because, you know, this, this technology, I'm sure, is going to continue to improve, especially as more municipalities take steps to adopt procedures that allow for this type of thing and recognize that they need to be, you know, ADA compliant, because it's no longer just a suspension of the open meetings law. It's part of normal procedures now. And so I think we just have to leave room for us, us to improve this as we go along. And, you know, whether it's the hand raising feature on a platform like Zoom or whatever it is, we'll, we'll kind of figure out the best ways to address it as we go. And a meeting that has high attendance, that's, you know, got maybe a hot topic issue that there's a lot of interest in, is of course going to be more challenging for people with, with the technology, too, because you're going to have that tendency for kind of, you know, one person inadvertently stepping on another's communications in an effort to try and be heard, which is a lot harder to do when you can't see the other people in the room so easily because you're remote versus being in a room together. These are, these are the difficulties we're going to experience along the way, and we're all going to have to just work together to kind of get through them.
Yeah, I think you're correct, Ryan. And I would suspect that the industry that creates this kind of technology is going to be well aware that to be competitive in the marketplace, they're going to have to provide municipalities with a reliable software that addresses some of those issues. So we may, we won't see it by June 8th, but over time, that technology will be enhanced significantly, I would suspect, so.
And I've been to hybrid meetings, hybrid public hearings, and, you know, I've always told people, like, if there's a hybrid option, but you really want to be heard, your best bet is to go in person because there's no technical glitches when you're live, so.
I think that's an underlying message in this legislation.
John again. We need a chime or something.
Go ahead, John.
There is one other point, though, that is relative to the technology. When you're talking about not, not shutting off your video. Quite often, if there's a low bandwidth issue, like I'm experiencing now here, I can, I can lose, I can lose the connection if I don't get rid of the video. On occasion, that happens depending on where people are coming from. It's a technical issue, but, you know, you should be aware of that in drafting the legislation. Sometimes it's very hard.
It's all reasonable.
Yeah, you, you have a valid, you have a valid point, John, with regards to the connectivity issues that sometimes people experience. But unfortunately, with regards to the turning off of a camera, the state legislation requires that the camera must be on for the board participants in the meeting. I think, you know, if your, if your video kind of clicks in and out a little bit because of a connectivity issue, that's not necessarily a problem because it's not actually the individual turning off the camera. But the camera has to remain on. And when we don't have the flexibility because of the state legislation to allow for our own local law to account for the bandwidth issues that are sometimes solved by turning the camera off, they, they haven't caught up to that yet with the legislation allowing for that to happen.
The general idea being the board member has to be present.
Yeah, yeah.
With no fault of their own.
Yeah, if the video fades in and out because of technology, then so be it. They just can't, you know, choose to turn it off.
But we don't have that flexibility to put that option in. We have to comply with the state law.
I've had Optimum turn my whole neighborhood off in a board meeting.
Yeah, that can happen. But I think the distinction that it's not a purposeful act on the part of an elected official.
To John's point, sometimes it's either you can be heard.
Or seen.
Or you can't have both. So it's, it's either you turn your video off to be heard or you lose your connection altogether.
To his scenario and to the one that I just indicated, I literally had no more cable and I called in. Can, I guess, part of the legislation, can you re-enter the meeting?
I think you can re-enter the meeting, but I'm glad you mentioned calling in because that is specifically prohibited. You cannot call in. I think you could re-enter the meeting, sure. And I think if at some point, say, say it was the end of the meeting, for example, for this board, it was the end of the meeting and you were going through resolutions, if you happened to not be seen for that resolution, your vote wouldn't count for that resolution. But once you got back on to the meeting, then your vote would count for the next resolution. And you still had a quorum present, so it could affect the passage of some resolutions. But you would still be able to participate, perhaps not with the continuity that you wanted, but.
And although we all have experienced those kinds of things, given the sometimes hours and hours in the course of a month that we spend on video conferencing, those things are incidental by comparison, I would think.
And the public may or may not be as savvy as people who spend a lot of time, and they may not understand or have figured out how to fully participate. I've received complaints about some meetings where the public could not participate. And I was on the meeting and it seemed to work well. I'm not questioning them, but it just, it didn't work for them, for whatever reason. So there's definitely going to be some technological issues that we have to kind of iron out and sort through. And I hope there's some latitude in our local law that would provide for that. As far as live meetings, we've, we've been doing live meetings for quite some time. In other words, you could watch them. You cannot participate, but you can watch our meetings live.
Only when we're in locations that have the feed. When we were in the auditorium, sometimes it took up to, you know, a couple of weeks to get them actually posted where the, and those are, were very controversial hearings that people were anxious to view.
Right.
So, you know, those are things. But if I could just, I've been watching from downstairs. There was a little echo going on on my computer, not as much as when I left the room earlier, but still going on. The continuity, the ability to identify the speakers is sometimes cumbersome in the Zoom meetings because they sit down at their husband's computer and his name is below. Or there's no name, or it's a nickname or something. So that's something that we want to be able to do for the minutes, for the record. And it's something that comes up quite frequently because sometimes people will speak their names, but we don't actually know the spelling. Sometimes they're, they're difficult to determine. Requiring emails when people are signing in has been something to help identify them and prevent hackers from getting into the meetings. I don't know that you need that in your, but we need to take that into consideration because I've sat and watched a couple of planning boards from one of our villages, and several times, and very offensive activities took place where they had to shut the whole thing down and start all over again, just to get rid of the person. Because when they're in your waiting room.
Can Charles speak?
Yeah, I think it'd be good help for that.
You gotta go to the microphone, Charles. I can hear you.
When they're in the, and Charles will probably speak to some of this because he's probably been helping one of them with those activities that were taking place. If you want to go ahead and I can finish up.
Village has different software. We have webinar. And I'm sort of the gatekeeper on that. So if anything like that did arise, I could take them on right away.
The individual, not without shutting down the whole meeting.
Yes.
Now, when they're in the waiting room, are they identifying themselves as to who they are? Are their names needing to be typed in so that we know that?
What happens is there's an email or a name.
Well, because emails don't always identify the individual.
Usually there's a name. For instance, when I do the ZVA, I get a list of people who are supposed to present or come in. And if I don't see their name, I can't let them in. Sometimes it's a phone number.
In a general meeting, it would be very helpful if they needed to identify themselves with their names, not just an email before they speak. Because that way, at least we have it for the record. We know who they are when, when they come up. And we don't have to then ask them and go through, through that whole process. And that way, you know it's a person, or they, at least somebody.
I agree with that, but I don't know how we would police it. I agree with it.
You don't get live until the meeting.
What we can do, what.
Well, we might not have to police it as much as it would be extraordinarily helpful for us, for the record, to know who these people are.
What usually happens in those other boards is when, before a person speaks, just like when they come to the podium, they have to say their name and spell it. I mean.
Right, but in Zoom, that's not always as easy as it sounds.
But that's, that may be a protocol that we can introduce, as you're suggesting.
Kind of bring up things.
If you're, if you're intending, if you're a member of the public intending to speak via Zoom, then you need to identify yourself by, by name and then provide the spelling of it. It may not be a perfect system, but we would have a record somewhere of the correct spelling that we could identify.
In the planning board, they ask, state your name before you speak. In the zoning board, most of the time, people have to be sworn in. So that's another board where they ask. So the town board would probably have to do that.
We have a card system, as you know, and we give the cards to the clerk.
And that's really helpful, when you can read their handwriting.
Yeah.
And we don't check IDs. I mean, we just take them at their word.
But they won't have a card if they're on video.
Right, but it's the verbal version of this.
But we also, we also do ask for people to come up and speak if, you know, we're looking at the audience. Does anybody else want to come speak? And we let them speak. And they say their name. It probably could be part of our meeting, just part of the meeting.
And this isn't part of legislation either, but what we have found is that after someone has spoken, they should be taken off the screen. Because sometimes they put an emoji up there that we look at for the next hour and a half. And it makes the other people who come into the situation smaller. And so after we've had 10 people speak and they're still all up on the screen, it starts.
As a host, I have the ability.
So just something, you know, for the process.
These are mechanics, if you will. We have to work out, and I think they're, they're resolvable. But they're good points to pay attention to. It's going to become more, at least in the beginning, the role of whoever's chairing the meeting to ask those questions at the outset. But I think it's resolvable in that way. Thank you, Charles. I appreciate that.
And we should do our best to just try and.
Oh, yeah?
We should do our best to try and mirror what we do physically present, as, as has kind of been stated all along here, virtually with video conference. So if somebody would go to the podium and state their name and the spelling of their name when they were physically present, they, they should, the same expectation should exist in video conferencing so that we're mirroring those procedures as best as possible. And it still may not be easily audible for, for, you know, the purposes of transcription and stuff like that, but between that and if they have to type in a name and an email when they come into the meeting, and if we make a couple of different efforts along the way, hopefully, it will at least be helpful to get there.
Or the bottom of their screen, like we all do when we go on soon.
So Kathleen has a few more bullet items in the last part of this memorandum to the board. So if I want to just take, review those, please.
Sure. So at the bottom of page two, you'll see a discussion about state of emergencies. And what that says is basically if, what the new law says is that if the governor or the town supervisor declares a state of emergency, either statewide or on the local level, then these provisions are suspended, and the board, for the duration of that emergency, can then resume full video conferencing without having to have the public present. So you can go back to, so to speak, the pandemic version. So that if there was a massive snowstorm or weather event, and it was imperative that the town board conduct business, the supervisor could call a meeting and you could all participate. the town board conduct business, the supervisor could call a meeting and you could all participate remotely without the public having to.
And that would be the call of the supervisor.
Correct.
So we have.
The emergency order.
Correct, under Executive 124.
And we have that boilerplate for the state, the local state of emergency, we'd have to add this as one of the, one of the options to check off or not check off.
That's a good point.
So on that though, because if we would have a board meeting say that was suspended because of a snowstorm or bad weather, because we are now having everything available via teleconferencing, everything's being noticed that way, we could still continue with a public hearing because?
Correct. I mean, it would be within your discretion whether you would want to do a public hearing. But yes, in terms of passing a resolution, perhaps you have to do, you know, you need to sign something for a grant application, whatever you might need to get done. You could do fully remote without having to have these public, public participa, the public, let me be clear, the public, without having the public presence, the public could still participate. It would be much like we do now. And then the last page really just talks about the duration. This amendment to Public Officers Law is effective until July 1st, 2024. On January 1st, 2024, the Committee on Open Government is charged with sending out basically a report to decide how it did and what changes might be necessary. And so we could probably expect at that time either amendments to the state law or I would imagine another law adopting the law in perpetuity and making it permanent. And then as we spoke to, as we spoke about earlier, you have until June 8th to continue the procedures under which we are currently working. And then thereafter, we'll have to pass local legislation to use video conferencing. And then the next page you'll see is a draft local law. It's very, page two, you know, page one is your legislative intent. The bottom of page one and the top of page two of that local law is pretty straightforward. And basically, it just says that the town board hereby authorizes members of the town's public bodies to participate in meetings using video conference technology in a manner consistent with Public Officers Law, as well as the town's video conferencing procedures. And so the real substance of your policies and procedures will be identified in that draft resolution that you have. So the resolution, everything that you see is lifted directly and verbatim from New York State law. The only thing that you can amend is what's in yellow or add to. So what's in yellow is not in the state law. That was just meant to give you an idea of what you could say, what you might say. Certainly up to you whether or not you want to change that, keep it, add to it. But everything else that's not highlighted does have to be in there because that mimics the New York State law. So what we've added, and again, you can take this out, you can add to it, you can change it, is under B, your extraordinary circumstances definition, we said that shall not include traffic or conflicting social engagements. And then number three, in terms of procedure, if a member cannot be physically present at a meeting due to an extraordinary circumstance, the member must notify the chair of the board in writing at least four hours prior to the posted start of the meeting so that efforts can be made to ensure that a quorum will be physically present at the meeting location. And that can be an email. And again, this is just suggested language. It's within this board's authority and discretion to decide if you want to do that or what process you think might be best in order to notify the chair. But I do think it's important that there is an opportunity to, for the chair and the town attorney's office frankly also, to understand whether or not a quorum will be present that night or that day for the meeting.
So if a chair gets a notice from a number of members and it looks like a quorum will not be present, then the meeting doesn't happen.
You'd have to cancel the meeting.
Unless they can convince, the chair can convince.
Correct.
One or two, or how many ever people required for a quorum to be present at this day or whatever day is.
Yeah.
And I think for that exact reason, Councilman Sciovanni, the legislation, although it doesn't prescribe specifically what is an unacceptable extraordinary circumstance, the intent certainly is that that should have a high threshold. We should consider that as representatives of the community, that our first obligation for a noticed meeting is to attend that meeting. And I don't suspect that anybody would, but that it shouldn't be considered lightly if you have an inclination to not attend the meeting in the place available to the public.
Agreed. So could, you know, think about these procedures, think about what you might want to add to that, what you think should be in there, that might not be in there. And then the second page, the only highlighted item, which we've touched on briefly, is that the IT department, together with the town attorney's office, will work to ensure that any licenses entered into with vendors of virtual platforms offer services that meet those ADA requirements. And much of what else is in this resolution is what we've talked about already.
So the process would be, Kathleen, you would, we'd have to notice a public hearing for this. And I guess our next opportunity, that would be our May 10th meeting, is it?
Correct.
And then have the public hearing at the second meeting, which puts us, as you described earlier, on a kind of a tight timeline to the June 8th, but give or take two or three days, I don't think that's problematic.
Right, yeah. And I can submit that, or, you know, I can, my deadline to submit for the May 10th meeting will be next week. So if you could let me know prior to that, if you'd like to see any changes, otherwise I can go ahead and submit that notice of hearing. And certainly, changes may come out of the local law. While I wouldn't have this video conferencing resolution on until you adopt the local law, we could certainly have it available at that public hearing for discussion because obviously it's an integral part.
And it could be adopted later. Doesn't have to be adopted on the same day.
That's true.
Ideally, yes, but.
Correct, you're right.
Are there any other comments or questions for board members, for Kathleen or Ryan?
No, just that, I'm 100% in favor of this. I've actually written the governor about this, taking into account my injuries that I had during COVID. I was lucky enough to be able to not miss a meeting from either nursing home or the hospital. So, you know, it was important for me to be here and exercise my vote. And so I'm very happy that we're going to continue with this.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Kathleen, Ryan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charlie, sorry, Charlie, he's hoping he's headed in there.
Did you see him?
Yeah.
I don't know if Mr. Houghton, our town engineer, is going to be able to join us for this meeting. We got a, let me check.
I don't think so, no, I was told he was not going to be here.
The next item on the agenda is Shrubland Road restrictions. It's currently an area sort of perpendicular to County Road 39. That allows or has some limits on left turning in that area. And the board would like to review that. Our highway superintendent, Mr. McCartell, is here. And the board, I think, if I remember correctly, yes, has an email with some comments from our town engineer, Tom Houghton, who is unable to join us today. So Charlie, thank you for being here.
No problem.
Maybe either Councilwoman McNamara or Mr. McCartell will sort of define for the public's benefit, what are we, what are we looking at here? What are the considerations for the board?
So I guess, I'm not sure exactly when it was instituted, but there was a no left turn on Shrubland Road during the morning hours, I guess in an effort to relieve some of the traffic for that Tuckahoe area neighborhood. Some of the concerns were the traffic by the school at the time. It's my opinion, and I think Councilwoman McNamara agrees, that we should take a look at maybe opening up that left-hand turn to see if it relieves traffic on County Road 39, Sunrise Highway, which in turn will relieve some traffic in Hampton Bays and actually now into East Quogue. I believe it was originally in a pilot program. I don't know if it was ever put into full.
I think it's.
It was, it was in the, it was amended on, in 2007, which is far before we had a lot of the issues that we currently have.
Yeah, so just, thank you for the description, Charlie. Just to be clear for the public, it's proceeding eastbound on County Road 39 where you would be make, and there is a turning, a turning lane there, an arrow turning lane. And at certain hours, is it still under hours that you're not allowed to make that left-hand turn?
It's AM hours, I believe it's six.
6:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
Six to 10:00.
Yeah, that you're not allowed to make that left turn on County Road, off of County Road 39 onto Shrubland. So the consideration, is that still a viable restriction or should it be amended in some way, shape, or form, or maybe removed in entirety? I don't know if the board members got an opportunity to read Mr. Houghton's memo, but he raised some reasonable questions. I know that I'm not prepared to answer those questions. And perhaps if the board members want to ask more questions or add more comment, it might be a consideration since enforcement is one of the issues, that we at least have some consultation with the Southampton Police Department to see what, if any enforcement issues it presents to them.
As it currently exists, you mean?
As it currently exists, yeah.
I've sat out there in the morning and probably about 50 cars an hour make that left-hand turn.
Yeah, when they, when they see that everybody else is doing it, it's like monkeys see monkey do. But it's, it's something, it was done to keep traffic off of those back roads, and I think everyone can agree, there isn't a back road that currently doesn't have traffic in the morning anymore. It's, we're beyond that point. And it's, from my perspective, if we can do something to alleviate at least some of the traffic without somebody, like you said, they're doing it anyway, they're just basically taking the gamble on whether or not they're going to get a ticket.
Some are doing it. It was, the traffic still flows, but, you know, I was watching, like, okay, there's another one, another one. And, you know, short of having a police officer writing tickets every single morning there.
Understood.
It would be difficult. But I do believe that, do we have any studies to indicate that it would relieve traffic on County Road 39 and 27 and that it would actually help the situation that was being described in Hampton Bays and East Quogue or?
I don't think there was a study to say to do it in the first place. We don't have a study to say it would work. We spoke briefly about, hey, let's do a pilot program to see if it does work. I have to be honest with you. I was totally embarrassed as an elected official on a Zoom just the other day with our counterparts from the West, the engineers from Suffolk County to talk about County Road 39. And I was furious as a taxpayer to listen to a lot of nothing. And I'm also upset with the chief of police. Everybody on that Zoom just raised their hand and they want to do a study for $5 million that will be not completed in my lifetime. We have problems today. And if we can come up with some small solutions that may work, a pilot program for a month, let's let cars make the left on Shrubland. After, maybe even after school is closed, so the school's not an argument anymore, to see if it relieves the traffic. And one of the reasons I am upset is that they have a traffic control officer, I believe makes $15 an hour, that sits on Canoe Place Road, and we have the chief of police saying that he can't man that all year round. It's basically about $60 a day where you have 50,000 people complaining because they're in traffic for two hours a day. You have tenured teachers resigning from schools left and right because they don't want to sit in the traffic. You have emergency people that work at the hospitals asking us for a, you know, emergency HOV lane so they can get to work on time. You're spending millions of dollars looking towards affordable housing and workforce housing. And we can't spend $45 a day on a program that everyone in Hampton Bays agrees works at Canoe Place Road? That is wrong. And to say that you can enforce.
Charlie, I got to stop you. I mean, the chief really should be in here to address these things.
I'm just saying.
And he's not. And I know that before the summer months, the traffic control officers were not employed at the police and we had full-time police officers there. And that is a budgetary expense. And I don't mean, you know, I get what you're saying, and you're saying a lot. You know, what my question was, was about study or engineering reports, would it actually work? And I think it's a fair question.
So you.
What do you say to all the people that are currently dealing with this situation on their roads that are coming to us saying, can you please make no turn onto my road because I'm tired of trade parade traffic through my neighborhood every single day? How do you take this one neighborhood and say, you know what, you get a pass. You get a pass from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM. We won't let traffic turn onto your road, but everybody else has to deal with it. If it has any, I mean, I guarantee you, if this came up to a public hearing, there'd be everybody from that neighborhood coming in to complain about, you know, we don't want traffic. I don't want traffic. Nobody wants traffic. But it's something we are all dealing with and we're trying to come up with any solution that doesn't cost a million dollars, that doesn't require a 20-year study, like.
I'm not suggesting a 20-year study, and please don't.
No, no, no.
I mean, studies are reasonable. I mean, government, we do these things. And my question is, would it work? And I think it's a fair question. And, you know, if we open this up and allow a left-hand turn and it changes nothing, well then what have we done? So that's a question that we should think about.
Okay, I agree with you to a point. We did something. We tried something. Look, there are many things that I personally believe, without doing all these studies, you have traffic control officers that, again, are not that expensive. And I hate to bring up New York City, but New York City does it all the time. To relieve the traffic in New York City, you have traffic control officers on key corners during key points of the day. We are not New York City, but some of this resembles New York City in the morning. So why wouldn't the board, as a group, turn around and say, why don't we hire 10 full-time traffic control officers, similar to like school crossing guards? They come in in the morning and nobody addresses the afternoon. Everyone just goes right past that. The afternoon's just as bad. And then we have a group of traffic control officers that come back in the afternoon. I get it's a safety issue, but the county could give them the remotes to remote all of the, all of the lights. So if there's nobody waiting, they could keep them green. The flashing lights, they don't, whatever, I don't know if you guys were on the Zoom, they were opposed to doing the flashing lights again.
Yeah.
You know? And I just, you know, you have, I believe there's probably 13, maybe 10.
No, that's not correct. Flashing stoplights have to remain, they have to control traffic. You can't just make them green lights all one way until a car comes. I mean, there's a timing aspect. That's state law, I believe. I'd have to look it up, but.
No, but haven't you ever been at a traffic light where it's being controlled by somebody standing there?
I've been at traffic lights that are longer and they can direct traffic in one way or another. But to say it's just easy, you know, to change the traffic lights, I mean, can we do that?
Well, the suggestion, as it's recorded in the memo that was shared with us, is that the consideration is to eliminate it altogether.
Right.
But there are, there are, there needs to be, I believe there needs to be other input into this conversation, and you've already alluded to it.
Right.
If the answer is additional TCOs, then the chief or one of his delegate, Captain Kirner or someone, has to be part of that conversation.
Because these are budgetary.
And in terms of studies, it may not have to be elaborate. Maybe you start with a car counter on Shrubland that counts how many cars during a certain period of time are making that turn. Are we talking about 500 cars or 50 cars? I don't know. But I think it's a suggestion worth considering, only because the road, County Road 39, is problematic. Agreed.
So just so we're clear, are you suggesting that we do a study once it's open to see if it works or to do a study before we open it?
That's for someone with more expertise than I, but I would like to know how much of a problem is turning there right now. I mean, are 50 cars turning or is it 500 cars? I don't know. And that would make a difference. If it's only, and I'm sure it's not accurate, Charlie, but if it's only 50 cars and we change it, we really, we know from the numbers that hasn't accomplished very much. I'd like your suggestion for this consideration possibly, not that I wouldn't be one who would vote on it.
Right.
That it be considered during the summer months, because one of the issues raised when this was originally created had to do with the impact at the school where people were going to McGee Street and then making the right-hand turn to get back on County Road, or going up the one-way street that goes beyond that and going out through that little shopping mall and trying to get onto Sandy Hollow Road. So there were other complications other than, safety complications, other than the neighbors on that street. And we all can empathize with the impacts on local neighborhoods. So I would suggest that we, maybe not particularly in this forum, but certainly could do it here, to have a conversation that included the chief, included Mr. Houghton, and anyone else that we thought was appropriate so that we can resolve the request or some compromise in between that evidences that we're making an effort to try to get it to fix itself. fix itself, because I don't think we're going to fix it, we can only create the conditions that help it get fixed, and then measure that for a period of time. I think that's a reasonable approach to it, and if the board is amenable to that, then you know, we can, obviously the councilwoman and the highway superintendent could organize a conversation with the chief and Mr. Houghton when he's available, and see if we can come up with a new recommendation to come back to the board, either, or the same one, with some support behind it and some answers to the questions that have been raised here.
I brought this forward just because it was something that we had talked about, and it was something that we could easily implement without costing a lot of money or requiring staffing, and it was just something, and actually I brought this up at the Tuckahoe CAC meeting, and ironically, like, I thought they would be, you know, no way, no way. Every single person in that room said, why don't you do it? They thought it would help.
Again, clearly, there's a lot of procedures involved, but even if it started with cars only, you know.
No trucks.
No trucks at all, no commercial vehicles at all. Again, there's an enforcement end of it, but I honestly, you can't raise your hand and surrender because we don't have enough people to enforce something. You know, on that Zoom, they were talking about the chronic problem of the U-turn, when you come out by CPI, and now you're going to head west and then bang a quick U-turn in the morning, and it was brought up to put up a no-U-turn sign. And 90% of people obey the laws, and the 10% that don't, once they get a summons, they're not going to do it again. You can't have a cop there all day long, I get that, but I have to be honest, years ago, they had a highway unit in the police department. They had three people, Walter Britton, a couple other people, that worked Monday through Fridays, and they worked 6:00 in the morning to 2:00 PM, and they addressed all of these areas that every neighborhood is complaining about. So you have backroads that are now cut-throughs, and the big complaint is, they're speeding through there to get to the next stop, like Waze is sending them through, Dune Road and Hampton Bays, and they're coming out all over, so we get a lot of complaints, hey, we need stop signs, we need speed bumps, we need all these things. I get it, the police camp be everywhere. But if they rotated around on these key areas, you get a summons, you're not going to make that U-turn again, and everyone's out there with ways has when there's police officers out there, they will obey the law. 90% of the people do obey traffic laws, 10% don't. And look, they get aggressive because the traffic's so bad. If the traffic was a little lighter, it would work. I know there's not simple answers, but some of these things may help. The cone program helps, agreed?
Agreed.
So.
So it was, I was on the Zoom with Jay and Charlie, and it was very apparent that the county had no solution other than extending Sunrise Highway to Bridgehampton, so we were pretty much on our own in anything.
Talking about bridges and things that.
Yeah, putting another bridge in and big projects like that, but they weren't offering any money, any infrastructure money, we were requesting for little projects, they flat-out told us, the money's gone, don't even ask, and this is what we're already committed to. You know, the simple solutions like the cones, you take that one step further, maybe eliminate the right-hand turn coming out of Canoe Place.
Agreed.
People are not going to be racing down Dune Road, they're not going to be taking Fanning Avenue, they're not going to be cutting down Argon and through the little side streets. It eliminates all that from ways then, and that's what we have to do. And the other flip side is.
You mean put a no right on red on Canoe Place and Montauk?
I would eliminate, I would eliminate a right turn period in that, in the morning time.
Coming out of CPI, so you can't go west to come back east.
And make that U-turn.
Yeah.
Right. Well, that's one, but also the other way, coming out by the gas station by.
So you can't make a left anymore?
Don't make a right or a left there, because that's all the traffic that now filters in, and it tries to zipper, but it doesn't. So between that right-hand turn and the left-hand turns from Old Rivet Road, it's now backing up and backing up, and we're on Bellows Terrace.
Yes.
I have been on Bellows Terrace three times in my life, it is now a parking lot, because people now have to get off in East Quogue, and now they go on Bellows Terrace because their phone says, hey, take this, you'll save a minute and a half.
Right, I like the idea, I mean theoretically, or in my view, is that we would want people to stay on the highway.
Right.
And wait, queue up on highway, you know, and.
Look, if I was going north, Sag Harbor, Neowak, East Hampton, I was in my car, I would make that left on Sandy Hollow, and I would go, I would get off 39 as fast as I could. And I think people in cars, teachers, all those things that are heading north, will go on Sandy Hollow as soon as they can.
Shrubland.
Shrubland, I'm sorry, I do that all the time, on Shrubland, to get off the highway and to go north. And once those start happening, 39 starts to pick up a little pace, and 27 will be moving.
Right.
It's my opinion. Is it a study, or do we just try it for the month of June or July?
I don't know what the answer is to that question, Charlie, but it's, it's a, it's a simple suggestion with a complex implementation component to it.
With no cost. Take the sign down, you know?
Well, yeah, taking the sign down, but we, I think we do have to have this conversation that includes the police department.
It's in our code, too.
And it's in the code, so we would have to have a.
Right.
Public hearing. A public hearing in order to make any modifications, I'm not sure if we'd have to have a public hearing for a pilot program, but certainly they would, I would think the board would want some broader discussion with the public, whether it's required or not. Is it, would it be required for a pilot?
For a pilot?
No, no, not for a pilot, no, if you just want to do a pilot, but it to, to change the provision of the code, obviously.
Yeah, you would have to do that. So let's, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, so this, so this morning, just, just as a point, this morning Pleasure Drive was backed up all the way to 104. There are people in Flanders asking for a "don't block the box" to your point of New York City, they would like a "don't block the box" painting on an intersection because they can't make a left off of their road because like, nobody's letting them get through the traffic. And I just think it's important for us to have these conversations and have these dialogues, because people are very frustrated, and when they don't hear us at least exploring options and trying to come up with anything to help them save five minutes in the morning, it looks like we don't care. And so the fact that, you know, you met with the county, but the people don't know that you and Charlie and the supervisor met with the county, I think it's important to have these discussions, and important to let them know that we are working, you know, internally and with other, other sources to try to make things better, and you know, unless we're having these public conversations, nobody knows that this is going on.
It's a good point, it's a good point.
Yeah, Route 24 is almost into the danger time of year where the turn lane becomes the passing lane.
It already is.
And they race up and down.
I got passed on Montauk Highway, coming, somebody passed me coming, they went the whole length of the college in oncoming traffic to make the left at the light.
Well, that's how that horrible accident happened on Hill Street a couple years ago.
Awful.
That nanny was killed.
The guy jumped there.
Yeah.
Well.
But I agree, Frank, let's get more people to the table and discuss.
And just have a conversation.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point, Cindy. John, did you have any comment that you wanted to add at this point?
Can you all hear me?
Yeah, we got you now.
I mean, I think you're all making all good points, you know, a lot of people have a lot of opinions, I think you definitely need to get the right stakeholders in place and have the conversation with our engineer and with police and code to, to explore that. You know, to your point, Cindy, it's, you know, it is important that people understand that we, that we look at these things, and that's the way to do it. You know, we can have 10 opinions on 20 subjects, but you need to have the right people in the room, certainly happy to promote that.
Okay.
I think this is a good time to let the public know that it's 18 minutes on the railroad on the South Fork Community Connection between Hampton Bays and Bridgehampton, and 11 minutes to Southampton, so, and I know it's a.
This has been a public service announcement.
Well, it's there.
We need to work on those.
The last mile is.
Well, and the spur so that we can get more trains going, I think if we had more time.
Well, this morning, that's why I asked about the siding in the, in the previous presentation this morning in West Hampton, where the Long Island Railroad is looking at sidings, and if we can get two or three more sidings, then we could possibly get another train, and our state representatives are working on that.
That's helpful. Well, thank, thank you for bringing the topic forward, I think you're correct that it's important for the public here that we're grappling with the problems, and sometimes it's not as easy as sometimes is the impression you get that the public thinks you push a button and everything falls into place, it doesn't always work that way, there are a lot of things that to be considered, and I appreciate that. We'll follow up with the meeting as expeditiously as possible.
Sounds good.
And see if we can come to some resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
See you guys.
Okay, let's see.
I shouldn't let Charlie get out of the room, just to thank, thank him and his crews, you know, we've had a lot of quality of life issues that I get complaints on and everything, and his crews have been better than timely, taking care of a lot of things we need done around town, and I want to say thank you for that.
Thanks, Charlie.
There are no other items on the agenda, and we are actually 10 minutes ahead of schedule, so I want to ask any board members if at this point, before we adjourn the meeting, if there are any updates that board members would like to provide for the public's benefit?
I'll go first. So Great Eastern cleanup this past weekend, everybody was wonderful, I mean, there was crews that didn't even sign up with us to take care of the trash, that, that were out there from, from Sag Harbor, I met one lady in the woods who, she was out there, she says, I had 10 or 20 people out here yesterday, and I wanted to finish the job, and she walked me down to the lake and picked a tire up with one arm and a bag with the other, and brought me back, and I, I mean, it was just wonderful, the, you know, the Spionc residents group that cleaned up Montauk Highway and the train stations, you know, Hampton Bays, I got to hang out with the Boy Scouts at Squire Town Park and, you know, let them know what was going on there, East Landing, West Landing, the beaches, just a wonderful weekend to be able to go around and thank everybody for what they did, what they do. On another note, Saturday Arbor Day is, we are giving out free seedlings at Good Ground Park from 10 to 12. They're free, just stop up, I think it's just a couple per person, and Councilman Skivoni will also be in Bridgehampton doing the same. So anything, you know, they're all indigenous to here, they're species that Marty Shay had approved, that, you know, we want to see planted, you know, some are for sand, some are for beach, you know, it's, it's going to be a nice selection, so please take advantage of it, I don't want to take any home. So if we can all step up, it's something we want to build on for years to come.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, any?
I'm going to guess that the woman in the woods was probably Dave Dayton. On that note, we had, Councilman Skivoni and I attended the 25th year of the Friends of the Long Pond Green Belt, and we went over, you know, things that we've done and things that we can continue to do and do better, and ways to preserve things and keep them, you know, as they are. And it was great, I mean, there was, there was a lot of individuals there, some of them were there, people from our CPF office gave a great presentation on what we've preserved and what we have left to preserve, and it was a great day, and Friends of the Long Pond Green Belt have done a lot of work in 25 years on, on making sure that we keep the properties that we need to, and keep the area neat and clean, and, you know, deal with invasive species and all kinds of other things, so just a thank you to them.
That was a good program.
Oh, John?
Yeah, I just.
I feel like a Verizon commercial, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, John.
Yeah, just quickly, Southampton, where I'm going to be attending along with Mike Lieberman, the Long Island Energy Partnership, we've been recognized for legislation that this board passed unanimously, that's the New York State Stretch Code, so they're going to give us a mention and an honor, to honor us that we've done that, and just wanted to let you guys know that we'll, we'll be in attendance when that award is presented, so it's a, it's a good thing, so thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? There being no other items on the agenda and no other updates, I would ask for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
You have to give me the motion?
I have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Okay. Second by Mr. Councilman Skivoni, the meeting is adjourned.